The public comments. Yes, what I don't want to get into is a back and forth, if you don't mind. We don't really encourage that under public comments. Yeah, I don't want to discourage anyone, but just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Again, Chris Hall. What I saw from all the previous public comments was that everyone came up, said their piece, didn't point, didn't raise their voice. I didn't see that with the last public comment. I don't appreciate that kind of behavior.
That's all right. Mr. Carr, thank you.
I'd just like to say, excuse me. I'd just like to thank you for the clarification. It really serves to reinforce my convictions that I don't particularly want Mr. Cox. And it wasn't for political reasons that I stated, but just the potential of someone willing to participate in the activities that we beheld on January 6 alone is enough to deter my interest. He gives me great cause for pause. And again, I think that is the whole Wycomico County family that you have to consider as the team members, not just the county executive team. Let's not go so far to find what we have, which is right here so near.
Stairs.
And that's not to support any of the other legal councils or to not support them.
If someone is hired, my daughter is an attorney. She's a corporate attorney and handles many, many things. She was involved with the Delaware State merging with Wesley. One of the things that I do know, if someone is going to be handling personnel, they can choose what they want to enforce. So laws are there, but they don't, it's almost like church. You can select which Bible verse you want. You can drop some words. You can add some others, and you can select the translation that you want. So it is not that we don't want a person in a position. We're looking at the policies. We're looking at the practices, and we're looking at their ability to enforce laws in a just way.
Again, my name is Katrina Purnell. Having worked 32 years for a Fortune 500 company, 16 of it was as a union chief steward and the other time as a management person. Someone handling the rules for that company is no little deal. When you're talking about the hundreds and hundreds of people that work and what the union does or how it's formulated between that and management will determine a person's income, what their rights are, where their life is, their time at work, vacation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not a little deal that Mr. Cox will be doing. It's an important deal because you're not working with tiles, carpeting, renting. You're working with people. I think sometimes we excuse that thing as people. They're not numbers. They're human beings that have right to equitable living, equitable rights. And to be afraid of someone, I do not know him personally. I only know his public presence. Public presence is what we all see. Everybody has a face. The face he may show one person is not the face that he may show us. The face that I see is not a person that I'm afraid of. Because if you can make a stance as important as January 6, I'm afraid of you. If you can make a stance about some of the other things that he has said, about processes, each one of us in this room has a right to vote. We have a right to have our things counted, and we have a right to speak our mind. Because I may disagree with you doesn't mean that I'm against you. And I think that's the problem that most people make. Because I don't stand in agreement with everything you say and bow at the waist, then I'm against you. I'm against the process. And I think that that's what needs to be kept into account. It's the process on how people are handled. Thank you.
Mr. Purnell.
My name again is Jackette Brown Thomas, and I thank you for giving us that little synopsis. But it would be nice, like when you go out there, project yourself. You'll have pamphlets and stuff like that. So you telling us this, it don't mean nothing to me, being for real. I like to read it so when I want to come see you, I can have proof what you said. So don't be upset because of, you know, we want proof. Just do what you do. Put your stuff out like you did before so people can read it and know what's really going on. That's all I got to say. You have a great day.
Mr. Thomas.
I'm Mary Hubner again. I just have two quick things. Mr. Atkins, Barron Creek Road, I believe, I know that road. I'm a bird watcher, and it's, if it goes into the swamp or, I mean, it just drops off. We love it. We love it as it is. One other quick thing. The gentleman back here said that we don't know Mr. Cox. Well, I'm proud that I don't. My mother always said that people judge you by the friends you keep. And Mr. Cox, Mr. Harris, Mr., whatever his name is in Pennsylvania, I'm glad I don't know them.
The public comments. Seeing none, that concludes the public comments. Council comments.
I noticed last time we were here, it seemed like we needed TVs out in the hallway. We had so many people that weren't able to make a public comment because they didn't know it was public comment. And I don't know if that's something we could do to, you know, help everyone get a voice. Another thing I would like to say is, I mean, I would like to see this council come to agreement to try and work with the county executive. The county executive did win overwhelmingly on Election Day. I don't see why she can't have the people she needs to support her in her office, being the director, assistant director, the public information, and whoever else she needs in her office. It's not costing her any more money. And I just think, you know, it would be nice if we could work together because that's what we were elected to do, to move this county forward. And I know everyone's got different opinions, and that's okay. And I'm glad everyone was here today to express their concerns. But that is just something I would like to see going forth, that we do work together. Because there are two different branches, executive branch, legislative branch. And we've got to work together or nothing's going to happen. Thank you.
The public comments. Yes.
I just want to thank everybody that came out today to voice their opinion. I'd also like to thank the over 100 people that filled my inbox since Thursday night. All this information helps us make the best decision. It really doesn't matter what we think. It matters what you think. So, thank you. Thank you for sharing your opinions and, most of all, being respectful.
Any other comments? I would only say in our presidential comments, something in reference to what James said is that keep in mind when the council makes a decision, it's not deliberately tempting to dissuade the executive from moving forward with what her initiatives might be. We may simply have a difference of opinion, and that's really all it is. And I would not want the public to make it any more than that. This council has approved many resolutions or legislative bills that have come before us, but just in these last couple of months, we have approved many of the appointments from the executive, many appointments from the executive on most of the department heads that are now going to be running this county. So I don't want the public to get the perception that the council and the executive are in some battle and it's some type of, you know, personal debate. It is not. We simply are acting as what we feel is the best interest as an elected body with the constituents who put us in this role. So, as a clarification. Now, that being said, entertaining motion to adjourn from legislative session going to open work sessions followed by a closed work session pursuant to Section 3-305B1 of the General Provisions Article of the Annuated Code of Maryland to discuss the nomination of a health officer of Wycomico County and to protect confidentially of the individual, followed by a closed staff meeting to discuss the fiscal year '24 budget proposal for the council office. That is a motion.
To move.
Second.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Legislative session is adjourned. At this time, we will continue on. The agenda has lunch scheduled. Let me see where we are. I don't want to mess this up. No, I'm way ahead of us. Yeah, first item on the agenda is a commission to study a trauma center funding. I think Mr. Christopher Hall is here. Yes, he is. Right here is fine. Chris, yeah? We delayed all the proceedings to give you a chance to get here on time. Thanks.
You're too kind. For the record, I'm Chris Hall, a member, or actually a resident of Wycomico County, also the vice president of Strategy and Business Development and the chief business officer for Title Health. Mr. President, council members, madam, thank you for hearing me. Real quick, I'll just be brief. Title Health has submitted or participated in the submission of two bills. One is House Bill 675, and the other is Senate Bill 493. Those two bills that are currently in committee were drafted, actually, by a number of trauma centers across the state of Maryland. So in a participation with us, Hopkins, Life Bridge, MedStar, University of Maryland, and others. Title Health is the only trauma center on Maryland's eastern shore. In the state of Maryland, trauma centers are designated through MIMS, and we are a Level 3 trauma center. So the closest one after us is across the bridge in Baltimore in Prince George's County. The trauma center, if it did not reside here on the eastern shore, would be dramatically disastrous for the entire state, not only the eastern shore. We looked at the latest data. We're the second busiest, actually, in the state of Maryland behind shock trauma. We did 1,600 activations in the last fiscal year. And when we mapped out over the last four years where those residents who were treated here in Salisbury in the trauma center, where they resided, it covered every single one of Maryland's 24 counties, all three counties in Delaware, and both counties on Virginia's eastern shore. So it is pretty significant in the coverage. A lot of people ask why. Just remember, 8 million people come to the beach every summer, and they still have trauma. So, we've asked for a commission through these bills to be established. There is something in the record for what we call a trauma fund, and that was established back in the late 90s, early 2000s when Western Maryland Trauma Center was having difficulty. And that puts a $5 tax on all the vehicle registrations in the state of Maryland. So when you register your vehicle, $5 goes into this fund. To gather money back out of this fund, currently you have to submit all the paperwork for all the transactions that occurred. And many times, it doesn't actually, the money doesn't get used, and it just goes back into the general fund. So we're asking for this to be reevaluated through a study to see, is this contemporary? Is this the appropriate way? So that's why all the trauma centers are engaged to say, hey, it's been 20, almost 25 years. Let's take a look at this to make sure it's contemporary. So I'm here today asking support of the council to write letters of support to continue with this study and these bills.
Mr. Hall. Any questions, counsel? Okay. Taking a consensus, is the council in favor of getting the letter out? Okay? Everybody good? Shaney, you okay? We have a majority, Mr. Hall, so we will do that. I think the letter's already been prepared, and we're ready to get it out today.
Yep.
Thank you. We appreciate the work. Hey, Shaney. Next item on the agenda we have is a proposed letter of support to establish a Class B C-CL cigar lounge. Mr. Lufman, how are you?
Hi, doing great.
Good, good. We'll let you have the floor.
So Senator Cruz has this bill in which would allow Wycomico to be the third county in this state to do a cigar bar. One thing to keep in mind is that in order to have a cigar lounge, one of the licenses you get is called a tobacconist license. 70% of the proceeds have to be from tobacco products. So there, the other two counties that have this are Anarundo and Charles. Anarundo County has 590,000 people. Charles has about 180,000. And I say that because I sense that someone may think that if we open this up, they're the thing on every corner kind of thing. Anarundo only supports two of these. The market only supports one in Charles. Also, this goes before, this license would go before the board, and they would allow it. But inherently, first has to be a cigar lounge, tobacco license. And then this would additionally allow them to sell alcohol. Currently, there are no cigar lounges in Wycomico. I believe there are three in Ocean City. There's one in Easton, one in Oxford, and one in Cecil. And that's the cigar lounges for the nine-county region of the eastern shore. So what we see this as, and I talked to Dave Ryan, and he agrees, is that this is a small step toward a small economic development. We think that one business potentially would come in, haven't identified that business, haven't scouted for that business or anything like that. But if someone opened a facility like this, we're talking probably 10 jobs. And it'd be a small business opportunity for someone in our county. So I see this, this isn't a, even though it's cigar bar bill, this, we already are allowed to have cigar lounges. This is not a tobacco bill. It's more of a alcohol bill, allowing them to serve alcohol. I also want to make you aware of, last night I found out from Senator Cruz, the delegate Anderton, that there are potentially, if you go forward with, this would be a local courtesy bill if you do a letter of support. And there would be potentially a couple amendments that would be coming forward. And then, you know, the committee would do what they want. But one would not allow this entity to serve food, and that's a concern from restaurant owners. I haven't heard that from restaurant owners in Wycomico, but I heard that's some of the opposition that they've heard in, on the bill from, in their talkings in Annapolis. And the other potentially would be making this more of a private club-type thing. Right now, President Trump signed the bill. It was bill, or it was law in Maryland anyway. You can't serve or buy tobacco products or cigars unless you're 21 years old. So we're talking about an adult facility anyway. This wouldn't be open for children or that kind of thing. So, but the potential would be no food would be served. That could be an amendment. And the other would be, this would be a private club, so.
Yeah, is it, is it, how many, is there a certain amount of cigar lounges? Or is it, can it be as many as the community wants? I'm not, like I'm saying, I'm not, four cigar lounges. I don't smoke or anything, but just asking.
Right now, I know of nothing other than planning and zoning regulations that would control a cigar lounge. And this, you know, this would be a bar, so there'd be.
And is it just cigars?
Usually. That would, I mean, if you're asking if it's cigarettes, that's usually sort of.
I mean, I'm just, you know.
Usually, in order to sort of smoke in a cigar lounge, you have to buy a cigar at that store at that time, you know? Otherwise, they don't make any money if you bring in your own tobacco products. And most cigar lounges, if not all, don't sell cigarettes, so.
Yeah, you mentioned the amendment, they wouldn't be able to sell food. Certain types of licenses, alcohol licenses in Wycomico County, I guess depending on the seating and the space, you have to sell food and have to sell like a 51%. So that would change, how would that affect the ones that fall under that if you're going to allow a cigar bar to have an alcohol license but not serve food?
That would be up to how they craft the amendment. Like I said, this isn't something we put in a bill. This is just something I heard that I wanted to pass on to you that could be a potential change. I've been to those that do both, so.
So this would be where you would go to drink alcohol and smoke cigars, right? Yeah, I was surprised you said that as well, same as what Joe said. I thought that was like probably the first requirement of any facility where you go in to drink alcohol, that there had to be food, some type of food served as well. I'm not quite sure how that came about or who's crafting the bill, and I guess we have to leave that up to you, right?
That's an amendment that Senator Cruz was approached with, so.
Now, in here, it talks about, "The board may not issue a license for an establishment that is within 500 feet of a place of worship." There's also restrictions to private elementary schools, et cetera, et cetera. But the first line in this bill says, if I'm reading it correctly, says that this does not include businesses located, oh, excuse me, that's another question I have. The first, line four, says that in Wycomico, excluding the license from certain distance restrictions. Usually in a bill, it shows you like what's part of the old bill and what's new. So it appears to me that what's in this bill is a contradiction of terms, whereas the very first line of our first sentence talks about excluding the license from certain distance restrictions. And then when you go down to Section F, under the annual fee, it references the board may not establish, issue a license for an establishment that is located within 500 feet of a place of worship. I'm not quite sure why this just wouldn't be struck out here, Bunkie.
It could potentially be, but that's the, that's the old language. The fee, the F is the new language, and then the other below it is what is existing in statute right now.
Right. And it just seems like, and even though it's very odd that line four doesn't appear to be a new amendment to a bill, it just seems that if it, it does contradict itself. From the second line, it says excluding the, this bill excludes the license from certain distance restrictions, and then it establishes restrictions in one page down or two pages later. Follow me?
Yep.
So I don't know who's crafting it, what you want to do, just maybe they know more about it. I always find this, just like I do legal terminology, it's just a bit difficult to try to decipher sometimes. The only other question I had is I really did not understand section number, it's on page three of the bill. Number two says, "Does not include businesses located on the opposite sides of the streets," listed in Item 1. Item 1 talks about almost the entire block of downtown Salisbury, going from Riverside and Carroll Street all the way over to Route 13 and over to Route 50. So you've got the entire downtown area. And then this section here says, "It does not include businesses located on the opposite sides of the streets." What's that mean?
That's old language as well, and I was surprised to find that in. And I asked the bill drafter for an explanation, and I haven't received it yet. But apparently, what he said is this was already in the code.
Yeah.
I don't know if this goes back to the Watson Smokehouse or what, so.
Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, I just point those out as, to me, as a couple of inconsistencies that whoever prepared this, maybe it was a couple of oversights, so leaving in your hands. Any other comments remaining? Do we want to send a letter of endorsement, counsel? All right, we are good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item we have on the agenda, this is a letter of support to remove time restrictions on Sunday hunting. James, you have the floor on this, if you would like it.
Right, yes. So this is pretty much just exactly what John just said, is to remove the time restrictions for Sunday hunting. In some counties, we have a restriction that goes after 10:30, you have to be done hunting. We are looking to hopefully lift that restriction so that anyone can hunt. Let's say if they go to church on Sunday morning, well, now they can go hunting in the afternoon instead of skip church and go hunting in the morning. You know, that's, that doesn't make any sense. So this is what that bill would do, is hopefully remove any time restrictions for Sunday hunting.
Where is it now in Annapolis, James?
March 9 is, I believe, the hearing date.
And it's been, it's been moved forward by Johnny Mounds?
Johnny is moving this bill forward, yes, yes.
Any comments, questions from the council members? Everybody okay with this?
Yep, I'm okay with it.
All right, we're good. If we can get the letter out, Mrs. Hurley. Thank you for moving this forward, James. Next item we have, we still have a half hour left. Next item we have is a discussion on approving Dan Cox, Esquire of the Cox Law Center, as special legal counsel.
Mr. President, Mr. Cox is going to join us at 12:30 via Zoom. So we can postpone that one until after lunch. And I know we have a couple other work sessions scheduled for after lunch, but we can certainly talk about the fiscal year '24 council budget, if you're willing to move forward with that one.
We're going to go into closed session and then come back out?
Yes.
Which means we have to throw everybody out.
That would be correct. We would do the closed session, go to lunch, and then come back at 12:30.
They don't really have a choice, do they? Anyway, if we can see if, how about Brandy Wink? Will she be here any earlier, do you think?
She is scheduled for after lunch as well, perhaps number six on the agenda. Mr. Lufman is here. He can talk about that work session.
Let's do that right now, but at the meantime, I think we should probably try, because I know Mr. Cox is supposed to be through Zoom, and hopefully he can, he can log on within the next half hour. I don't know, it's not as if he has to drive here. We want to get, yeah, get ahold of him as well as Brandy Wink. In the meantime, we can go on to the Amendment to the Position Control Document. Oh, I get it, I get it. Everybody expects us to be an hour late, not an hour early.
We usually are an hour late.
You wait for someone else to join you?
Yeah.
It's fine.
I asked for our HR director, because she's, you know, we received a question on the time off.
Okay.
And she's, she knows all the nuance and stuff.
Thank you.
I didn't call her.
Laura, what happened to Shaney?
Shaney, are you there? Maybe she stepped away for a few minutes.
She's been gone for a while. Gone for a while. You want to try calling her back?
Yeah. I was watching, so I was like, oh, I better go upstairs.
Well, I think, well, I think we could, we could start, you know, when the councilwoman's on, and then if you have any time off questions, you know, we'll just defer on Madonna when she gets here.
So the item on the agenda is the Amendment to the Position Control Document for the Department of Corrections. Thank you for being here.
Okay, so, as we have done in the past with positions that we would like to overfill, we're requesting the ability to overfill the head of corrections position. And as such, we are requesting that two FTEs be created in the same position control number and the same line item within the budget. We did this back in the fall for a sheriff's position to allow training. This, this would allow training and an orderly transition with the, with the Department of Corrections to allow for the overfilling of this position. As soon as May 8, the overfill would go away. And thus, it's not creating a new position within the budget. It doesn't allow for us to, you know, try to refill this position and have two heads. We literally are putting two lines, you know, we're putting two FTEs in the same line, which is what we did back in the fall with a sheriff's office position. And that is what we're requesting to happen in this position, in this instance. There is sufficient funds within their budget. We're not asking for any additional funds. We're asking for the funds that we are currently paying to the current head, our funds that we would end up paying out anyways for the position because they are leave balances that, for the most part, are required to be paid to the person. So it's not costing the county a whole lot of additional funds that we wouldn't already be paying.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, I've seen some emails about, so the individual.
Yes, I've seen some emails about, so the individual was terminated back in February, or January of 19th, and supposedly, is there enough sick leave, vacation, personal time, and holiday time to make up that we do not owe that person additional monies?
Yes, basically, on May 8th, all of those balances would be exhausted, so there wouldn't be any additional payout on May 8th.
Actually, it looked like they're, you know, the only, I mean, it appears to me that when you take sick leave, vacation, personal time, and holiday time, that there will be some payout to the individual. But that's part of what the normal procedure might be anyway, should somebody leave.
Correct, yes.
Right, nothing additional.
No, nothing additional.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, which I think is a, is a very, is a very amicable agreement.
So it gets us, it allows us to have a person in the position early, sooner rather than later. It also allows us to have the availability, if there are any questions between the two heads, while the person is still employed with the county.
And it's been agreed upon that this is okay with everyone, right?
Yes.
Everybody's okay?
And so, again, there is no additional funding we're requesting, kind of like the same way with the sheriff's office. There is no additional funding we're requesting, because there is sufficient salary savings within the Corrections Department budget to accomplish this.
Okay. Any questions? No, you okay with it? You're good? Okay, I guess, where do we go with this? Resolution, any other?
Yeah, it would be, I believe it would be a resolution that, and as, as long as council's willing, it could go on the next meeting, because there's no hearing or anything needed.
All right, great, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are still trying to reach Mr. Cox. So would you?
All right, I'm, yeah, I think what we'll do is go, we'll go into the closed session. We're only, the only people we're throwing out is the press and the ciggers and our attorney. So if you all don't mind, we are going to go into closed session. Hannah, do you want us to contact you when we're done, or however?
Yeah, can you talk to me? You guys are all worked on?
Okay, thank you. Hello, we convene as the Wycomica County Council in legislative session 2023-04. For February 21st, 2023. First item on the agenda is the discussion of the approval of Dan Cox, Esquire in the Cox Law Center, as special legal counsel.
It's voice activated, you can just hold.
Oh, okay, fantastic. Okay, yep, I'm putting forth to approve Dan Cox as our special legal counsel. Mr. Karpinski, as you all know, was terminated over four weeks ago, so we do need to replace special counsel. I prefer to have somebody on the outside, just as Mr. Karpinski was. He was in Baltimore. And I have a great working relationship with Dan. I think that he would be an asset to this county. He brings a unique set of skills. This is not someone that I'm pulling off the street. This is somebody with 16 years of litigation experience in state and federal court. Every single thing that I need him to do, and that was, what was put forward in the resolution, he's able to do. I also saw in his, the information that you were given, the experience in supplement. He also has some, some experience in the liquor board oversight, which I think would be beneficial to this county as well. I understand that there's opposition. I understand that your inboxes were flooded with emails. But I just caution the council that if you feel in your heart that Dan is not the right fit, then I don't want you to vote for him. I want this to be coming from all of us. But the same constituents that voted for Dan voted you all in as well. So that's first and foremost. But secondly, okay, if you really don't think that he's a good fit, then by all means. But please be cautious about bending on a thousand, on 100 emails coming to you. Because this is not going to be the first time that it happens, as I'm sure Council President and Councilman Holloway know. So we're not going to make everybody happy, but this is someone that I think will be beneficial to our county. And I think the majority of residents would be happy with the decision.
Is that everything?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'll lay out, what is Mr. Cox's, what is his experience as far as, because I know collective bargaining is 90, probably 90% of what this job's going to entail. What's his, what's his experience with collective bargaining?
I need him on here to do this. So he's from, I mean, I don't know. Every single thing that I put forward, he was able to, to say that he had experience with. So, and I don't think it's going to be 90% of his job. I mean, it's just one piece of the job. So we only have the collective bargaining potentially sooner than later, because I know that's been brought up with sheriff and the FOP, that their agreement's not till next summer, technically. But we're looking to move that up, potentially, with raises and things like that coming across, so. He would have to answer that. And I'm sorry that he's not here. But again, I just needed more time.
I didn't see anything on the website that suggested that. I thought actually he was very limited on government as a whole. A couple of references to it, but it was almost as if what he maybe addressed in litigation regarding government agencies was rather limited. Didn't seem to be the basic focus of that other law firm.
Well, that felt like there was a lot of municipal work. You have property and zoning law, permits, appeals, the legislation, legislation drafting in the House of Delegates, the Senate as well. So we have that, you know, background as well. Code revision, like I said, the liquor board oversight was kind of an added bonus. The things that I need him for, well, he's able to do.
Should, may I just add? May I just suggest, or I don't know if it's possible, but since he's not even able to be here, is it possible to push this to another work session?
Sure, that's up to you all.
That it's actually fair to Mr. Cox that he has, he can actually speak. I mean, he's, you know, I mean, we're talking about him, and he doesn't even, he's not even here to answer these questions. And they're questions that we need answers.
What's the, what's the council want to do? You want to move forward, you want to?
Excuse me, may I say something?
Yes.
I can guarantee you, to the county executive, that the people that voted for me did not vote for Dan Cox. He would bring, we're trying as representatives, and, and I know the rest of the, my fellow council members, we should be trying to bring the county together and work together, because that's what they want to see. We don't want to see what's going on in D.C., in Washington, D.C., with the division. If we choose this man, Mr. Cox, as a special counsel, it would definitely bring division to our community. Is that what we want? I don't think so. I, I, when I looked Sunday, I come, I came home Saturday, when I opened the computer, I didn't understand why I was having all these emails. And all the emails that I received, and some of the people I did not know, most of them I didn't know, was opposed to Dan Cox as being a special counsel. Also, what I heard today from the people that was at the podium, the main summary is they're against Dan Cox of being the count, the special counsel. I am against Dan Cox for being a special counsel due to his philosophy, due to his campaign. If you're going to bring up campaign and legislative thinking, he is not a good fit for our county. Because what it will do, as I am a black person, represent a minority district, and in my heart, I cannot vote or endorse selecting him as a special counsel. I don't know what was wrong with the one we had. I don't know if he broke the law or whatever. But I think that we should take this decision seriously, because taxpayers do not want to see this man come across the bridge, does not know anything about us. And I also think that we should be reaching out to the, across the other aisle also, because the political, the election is over. There should not be no Republican and Democrat. That should be working for the betterment of the community. And we should be working across the aisle, both sides of the aisle, and by working together. So bottom line, I cannot support Dan Cox.
Hey, Shaney.
So should we waive?
Well, let me, I had some questions anyway. I had some questions anyway. Again, I don't see where his law firm is, has the expertise in this.
Well, again, I would prefer him to be here to answer those questions. I just think, I think Councilman Wynn makes an excellent point that he probably should be here, because I'm not an expert on his biography or his law experience.
Well, I mean, every other appointment that we've had, the person has been here to answer questions, and we can't give him the same opportunity. I don't think that would be fair across the board, if we're talking about being fair. And just because he's been blacklisted doesn't mean we should continue to blacklist him.
What do you mean blacklist?
Well, everybody doesn't like him. A lot of people don't like him. And, you know, there's a lot of people that do like him. But at the same time, I think, I think he should have that opportunity to speak his piece after all the public comments.
Well, let me, it's a work session.
Yeah.
I guess the question that I might have is, what happened? What's the status of his job as chief of staff to Doug Mastriano in Pennsylvania?
That's his job, full-time job.
So he just took that on, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So how does he do that job? And how does he also represent Wycomica County?
Because it's a part-time position, so he's able to still run his law firm.
But he's chief of staff.
I understand. I had that conversation with him, and he feels very confident. He's still practicing law, and so this is my choice.
Yeah, I feel uncomfortable with that. I mean, I could understand if he was a legal advisor, maybe to the governor, because that's, you know, he had a lot of attorneys. And that's what Mr. Wilber does, he's a legal advisor to the county. But when you're chief of staff, I've always felt that was a little more of a serious dedication, especially when you're talking about someone.
I had the same concern. I asked him, and he said that he would be able to do both.
Any questions? Jeff?
I don't have a question, but Mr. Cox, we got an email on January 6th saying that Mr. Karpinski was terminated. And that's all it said. We didn't get any reasons. I've heard some reasons since then, but can you expand on that?
I would prefer not to do that in an open session. I feel like that's a closed session conversation, but I'd be more than willing to have that with you.
I guess maybe expound on what you said to the media?
Sure. Well, I mean, all of that, I mean, that could all be FOIA'd, because the termination letter was sent via email, and so was his, the complaint to the Ethics Board as well.
Which Ethics Board was it?
The PIO did that, but you terminated her earlier today. So unfortunately, she won't be able to be in here and answer.
What Ethics Board was it that was contacted?
Her, like I said, it was handled through my PIO, who no longer works here. So unfortunately, I don't know if I'll be able to get that information. She, she was handling it.
State, was it, was it Ethics?
The state ethics, yes, legal, mm-hmm.
Because we have a local.
Legal ethics, mm-hmm, state.
And you don't have a documentation of?
I do have the documentation. I just didn't bring it, because we were talking about Dan Cox, not the firing of Kevin Karpinski. But I can obviously bring that in if you need that, if you'd like a copy of that.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know. And it certainly would be nice to know what their, what their final outcome is.
There's actually quite a few things that actually came from me, as well as the FOP.
Any other questions for anybody?
I guess my question is this, do we want to put it off? Or is there consensus not to move forward with it at all?
I really don't think it would be proper to just not have a consensus on it, being that he's not even here to talk. I mean, like I said, we're not going to give everyone the same fair shake. I really don't think that, you know, I don't think we should go down that rabbit hole and, and say, okay, well, just because 80 people said, I don't like this person, well, we're just gonna.
107,000 people in the county.
Yeah, there's a lot of people in the county. They might not have all been here, or they might not have been here, or maybe they just didn't know to come here to just support, to support this decision. But like I said, this was obviously an organized event by the Democratic Central Committee. And, and, you know, it's working on the majority of Republicans. Sadly enough, we need stronger Republicans to stand firm on these decision-making. But I really do think we should have this go to another session where Dan Cox can actually be here, present, to make a decision.
You're making the assumption that council members were influenced by the emails. That's an assumption.
Well, I just, I mean, let's just push it off then.
Jeff?
I'm ready to go.
Shane?
I can make my decision or put it off either way, but my, my decision is not going to change.
Joe?
My decision isn't going to change either.
All right, so do we have a consensus to move forward from council members? Do we have consensus to move forward with the appointment or not with the appointment?
Not with the appointment.
Not with the appointment? Shaney?
Not with the appointment.
Shaney?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to stay with my decision.
Okay, Joe?
No.
James?
Yes.
Chair votes no, so we will, we will not be moving forward. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Is that an on-record vote? Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was on record vote.
It's a consensus, it's a consensus not to move forward.
Okay, just, but like, but only by six, like, six of you, not seven? Or I guess five, five, right, and not one? Okay.
Five.
I just want to make sure that's.
Shaney's counts.
Right, but Josh doesn't, right, so it would be five.
It's all accounted in the minutes.
Yep, okay, thank you. I just want to make sure it was on record. Thank you.
For, okay. All right, next item on the agenda. Acting Health Officer Brandy Wink is here, right? How are you? Good to see you. You today?
I'm good, how is everyone else?
Good, thank you.
Good, thank you.
I also brought Steve White, our Environmental Health Director, with me as well.
Great. You gave us an update on how things are currently? I guess a big, you go ahead. If you could, for the public, tell us who you are and your position, each of you, thanks.
Brandy Wink, acting health officer for the Wycomica County Health Department.
Steve White, Environmental Health Director for Wycomica County Health Department.
Good to have you.
And we're here to get, to give an update. As everyone knows, we are short-staffed in environmental health and entered into a contract with MES and MDH to, or MD, sorry, MDE, to supply us with some additional help. And we were having that help for about two days a week since the end of November, first of December. They have not been with us for almost the past month, but will be back in our county this Thursday to start working on land evaluations. I think part of this meeting is to talk about going forward more with the MES contract, which, due to surplus in our budget for unfilled positions, we have the money to continue that contract and to continue to pay for that staff.
Any questions? So how many do we have right now? Are there only two who are actually doing, two circuit riders?
Yes, there's two MES workers that are actually not licensed, so they have to go out with MDE staff. They can't work independently on their own. So they will go out with MDE staff together to work on the properties.
And how are we on the backlog and the current workload coming in timeframe-wise? And how are we on the backlog and the current workload coming in timeframe-wise, as far as, I guess, how are we on settling the backlog, and how are we on moving forward in a timely manner with the current?
So on the septic, the backlog of the septic applications, we had 54 that we have worked through, along with MDE and MES's staff as well. Where the 54 stand, we have issued 14 permits. The difference is we are waiting for plans to come back from the homeowner, that, so we can approve it and issue the permits. And that's where we're finding a little bit of a backlog, is once we send the letter out, even if I say anything wrong, please correct me, once we send the letter out, we have to wait for the homeowner to give us a plan back, a design system. After 30 days, we send a letter. After 60 days, we send another letter. We've already sent 12 60 letters, 60-day letters out, reminding them that they need to get their plan to us. So unfortunately, we haven't submitted more permits, or be able to given out more permits, because we're waiting on those plans to come out. On top of those 54 that were our backlog, we've got additional ones have come in that we've been working on.
Right, since the backlog was addressed, we've had another 34 total applications, as much as septic applications. That's septic applications, tank-only new construction buildings. Staff that I have are trying to take care of, as well as work on everything else.
Then on top of those also, we have a spreadsheet that our staff, as well as MDE and MES, is going to start to work on Thursday, our land evaluations, that are our backlog of land evaluations. Some of them are over a year old, because we didn't have wet season last year to be able to address them, and there's 98 applications on that spreadsheet.
Any success with, with the applications?
Not at this time. Last week, I had a staff member attend a job fair at UMS, trying to recruit some new people coming, graduating in May. In March, they're going to go to SU, to their job fair, to again, try to recruit some people coming out with science degrees, to let them know that they're eligible for a job at the Health Department, because we're not, when we advertise, there's no one coming back on the state list.
We're constantly having to repost these positions, because there's no call.
Does any, anyone work overtime out of your office? Or is there funds for overtime, and does anybody take advantage of it?
I can't speak to how many, how much funds we have. There are some instances where they do work overtime, but the two staff members that I have are stretched as thin as they could possibly be, and I, having them work a lot of overtime is just going to make it that much worse on them, trying to, you know, I want them not only to get the job done, but we want them to do the job the best that they can. And if we overtax them, I'm afraid that our job is going to start slipping. We want to make sure we're doing the best for the citizens of Wycomica County.
And also, being state employees, when you're at a certain level as a state employee, you don't get overtime, you only earn comp time. So we're not able to even offer them the overtime funds, and then if they earn a bunch of comp time, we have a year to use it, then they have to take that time off. So...
Right, and then that's just time that they'll be taking off and out of, you know, not working.
I think that's one of the challenges we're really seeing, you know, you keep talking state to state, and I think it's one of the challenges that the executives are going to be facing, as well as any of the rest of us, is to, to determine whether or not we keep, you know, what the options are of keeping the Health Department the way it is, or whether we try to bring it in as a department within the county itself. We know the expenses are going to be rather exorbitant, but what role the state might even help us with, as far as helping to fund that position, even though it may be brought under the, the authority of the county itself. So, I don't know, I guess it's going to be a bit of a road trying to get there, if, if that may even be the best solution. I can't really say, I don't think anybody's really evaluated it yet. But it seems like we keep coming to a dead end, where we send letters to the state, asking us, asking them to even change the range of salary structure, so that the county can pay them more, and they still reject that. So I think we've done everything we can. What is it when the council, when the county decides to pay an additional, what is that term? I keep, Laurie used to have to...
County supplement?
Supplement, county supplement. I think that's something we need to consider, looking at whether or not the county does provide a supplement in this next coming budget cycle, to try to offset, or at least to try to encourage incentivize.
That may help to attract people to our county, versus, I mean, I don't feel there's many people out there, but then when all the counties are short-staffed and everybody's hiring, it may help them to come here versus to another county.
And there are some counties that do it, we're aware.
There are other counties that do supplement the salaries for the environmental health special series. Also, I know that there is an ASR that's being discussed at state level, to try to bring us up to where we need to be, so that we can attract these. Speaking with other directors, if all the other counties are the same vote that we're in, nobody will find anybody higher, and when they do come up, it's a, it's a point to see if we can...
Yeah. Jeff?
First of all, thank you all for, and your team, for what you're doing with not near enough people. If this additional funding is approved, how far, how much time does that buy us approximately?
You mean additional funding for the contract? Well, as I said, with the county appropriation that already was given to us for this fiscal year, because I don't have positions to pay, I'm sitting on surplus, so I would have enough to run this through June 30th, the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. The spreadsheet you sent, right? You sent, did you all send us a spreadsheet?
Did you send the spreadsheet? I don't think I...
Where did we get the Excel spreadsheet from?
It might be an old Excel spreadsheet. We haven't gotten anything recently.
Okay, then I won't, I won't get into it then. Sometimes I go back to my, into my folders and try to dig up, make sure I have everything, and there's a spreadsheet here, and I could have sworn it was referencing...
We do have a spreadsheet of the septic application, the 54 that we talked about that was worked on. I don't know if you were, if that was shared with you originally, if you would want that updated.
It updates, and if you have access to that, you should be able to see all the updates that are live, because it was done on, it makes a adjustment to it, it shows up across the board.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's what was shared with you.
Well, there's, the dates on here are for like, November 15th, 2022, all the way through, you know, some of these are through December as well, and it is referencing onsite septic evaluations and what the costs are, et cetera. Overhead costs, fringe benefit charges.
I don't know what that is.
Okay.
Is that maybe the invoice from MES?
That might be, that might be what it is, yeah. It says, find billable project transactions.
Yeah, that's, that's the invoice.
Okay, so that is relevant to...
Yeah, and if that's an older, and the one that was emailed, I think, today or Friday, is updated. If it's an older one, that was incorrect, because they were billing us for dates before the contract, but that we did just recently receive one.
The reason I bring it up is because just, I didn't know what fringe benefit charges were, or overhead costs were, but those always seemed to be the largest ticket items every time they entered it. And it appeared to me that maybe $27,000 of the total funding that we were originally looking at, might have been for them to just come in here and help set up. So my question was, maybe going forward now, there may be, the funding might be more directly implemented towards onsite progress, as opposed to setting up the structure?
Well, I think the overhead that you're talking about is setting up the structure. The actual salary should be dates that they were here working.
Yes, well, there's, there's a long list of numerous. I mean, it's, it's a lot, but just in a rough estimate, it looked to me like there's about 27, appeared to be, just involving setup fees and things like that. So I'm, I'm being optimistic, I hope that in the future, it may be strictly funding directed towards being out in the field.
I would definitely look at that one.
You can look at and email me, it's fine, yeah. Believe me, I can get lost in these sheets easily. Any questions? No? How do you see everything moving forward from here?
Definitely like to continue the contract, because we, we've told you what, what our backlog is, and how many applications we have outstanding, and we need the help, because as Steve said, with just two staff members, we, it's impossible to get it done in a timely fashion, and the longer we stay short-staffed, the more backed up we're going to get, is just the reality, until we can hire somebody.
Do you anticipate in the budget for 2024, do you anticipate that you'll have to account for this? Will we be using same vacancy salaries, or what?
Well, what I have planned to put in, is put in showing those positions filled, or, you know, what it would cost, you know, if we have these positions filled, and then if we're still, don't have them filled, if we can just use those funds for this contract to continue.
Anybody have questions? No? Did you want to add anything at all?
I don't have any.
All right, yeah, I'd reiterate, Jeff said thank you for what you're doing there, because you're working with a real...
We're trying.
Yeah. I have a question. Is your, your staffing for the rest of the Health Department, like restaurant inspections, whatever else you all do, is that adequate? I mean, is that out there being done like it should be?
There, again, we're slightly on the understaffed portion of that. We do, or have acquired a, an environmental trainee. She will be eligible to take her exam in March to move up to the, a full specialist. With, with her on board, we do have a couple of environmental aides working as well, who are trying to help pick up some of the slack, but there, again, as aides, they cannot do the work that the environmental health specialists do. Some need to go behind them or sign off on their work. So it's a help, as I, to put it bluntly, like grunt work, to get out and do the basic stuff, but we still need additional staff that is qualified to do the work, to either sign off on it or do it themselves.
The aides work on both sides, not just the restaurant side, they're also helping on the land side as well.
We have them, we have them covering the whole bases.
We don't usually have questions about opioids, or STDs, or any of the other stuff. We always want to just seem to focus on environmental health. That's, I know we're very myopic about that, but that's, that's where we see the biggest challenge right now, so.
We understand that. We, it's our biggest challenge as well, right this minute.
Okay. Anything we can do to help, let us know, and of course, I know you'll be talking with the executive as the next couple of months go by, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I had one more question, yeah. Somebody asked me the day, I thought it was the most ridiculous thing I ever heard. They said, oh, yeah, in Wycomica County, there's a new law that's been passed, that you can't have any, you cannot have, you cannot have any wells and septic anymore, or septic systems in anymore. Everything has to be a holding tank or, or a mound system. And I said, that's absolutely ridiculous. So, am I right?
That is ridiculous.
Okay, good.
We are issuing permits, as evidenced by what we do on regular septic systems, a sand mound is considered a standard septic system. Yes, we have increased the number of holding tanks that are going in. Unfortunately, we're coming up on these posted size stamp, posted stamp sized lots, that we have no, you know, no way of replacing anything, there's just not enough land to meet current regulations. So, yeah, we do have to issue some holding tanks. People are a little more open-minded than they used to be, but no, we are still issuing well permits, we're issuing septic permits, we're business as usual, as much as we possibly...
If somebody has the soils for a drain field, they're going to get a drain field.
Absolutely, all the outside.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I can't remember who said it now, but, all right. Next item on the agenda, it's a little complicated, because we shifted some things around a bit here, but I think we're going back into closed session, aren't we?
Yes.
Ms. Hurley?
Yes.
All right, so everybody who came in, we're glad you came in, we appreciate it. I'm going to kick you back out again. Thanks for, we appreciate you taking the time to be here.